Thanks for joining us for Election 2019, the Los Cruces School Board Candidate Forum. I'm Anthony Morano. Thank you to the NAACP, PFLAG, and the League of Women Voters of Southern New Mexico for cosponsoring this event. Our format is simple. Candidates have up to one minute to answer each question, and they should not mention any opponent in their answer. The candidates joining us are in ballot order, running in District 4, Teresa Tenorio, Janice Williams, William Zargis, and Jesus Joaquín Favela Jr. And running in District 5, Carol Cooper, Edward Frank, Gloria Martinez, and Maria Pacheco. Joining me from the League of Women Voters is Kathy Brooke. Okay, let's begin, and we are starting with District 4. Ms. Tenorio, thank you for being here. We are beginning with the question of, "Do you support gender-neutral restrooms in school facilities, and how would you work to ensure that these are available?"
Well, thank KRWG, the League of Women Voters, was PFLAG, and what was the fourth sponsor?
NAACP.
NAACP for having us here. Yes, I do support gender-neutral bathrooms, and I visited one at Doñana Elementary School. I saw one there.
All right, now we are going to Mr. Williams, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
Ms. Williams, I have to say, no, I do not support gender-neutral bathrooms, especially in a high school or middle school situations. I think it leads to some dangerous things that can happen with children at that point.
Mr. Zargis, I'll just go ahead and read the question again. "Do you support gender-neutral restrooms in school facilities, and how would you work to ensure that these are available?"
First, I'd like to also thank the sponsors. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I do support gender-neutral bathrooms. I think that there's obvious challenges that were brought up in certain of the groups in middle schools and high schools, but I feel that our educators are professional enough that they can deal with any issues that might come up in that area.
Okay. Mr. Favela Jr.
So, I believe, I was raised that you should treat everybody equally. Gender-neutral bathrooms gives that opportunity for certain individuals that identify as such. I think the biggest concern, though, is teachers aren't given that opportunity, save for a room for breastfeeding. You're accommodating students, but you're not accommodating the teachers. As the students, you're treating them a little bit different. I see that as a problem. But as far as gender-neutral bathrooms, I support it and treat everybody equally.
Ms. Cooper.
I don't support it. I think that it really does work well to have facilities for girls and boys, and not everybody is comfortable with that and the expense of it, the kinds of changes that we have to have. I don't think that's how money and time should be spent in this school.
Okay. Mr. Frank.
I think gender-neutral bathrooms should be available for students who want to use them, but I think there should also be separate bathrooms also. I think it's incredibly important that students' choices be respected, and if a student is comfortable in a gender-neutral bathroom and not comfortable going into the bathroom of their biological birth, then that should be available to them.
Okay, we're moving on to Ms. Martinez.
Yes, I do believe in having gender-neutral bathrooms, and last year I was proactive in working with the physical plat department to locate and designate one facility per school site as a gender-neutral restroom. Also, as a director of facilities, I'll ensure that any major construction projects will incorporate a gender-neutral bathroom in that design and construction.
Ms. Pacheco.
I do believe that there should be gender-neutral bathrooms. I think that it should be very careful how it's designed. I also believe that it is important to have separate bathrooms for students who are not comfortable. I do see issues with it, although, especially with sports teams and locker rooms, it could open up a whole other issue that comes into play as far as girls and boys in the same locker room, so that has to be a consideration as well, I believe.
Thank you very much. We're going to the second question, and Kathy Brooke with the League of Women Voters has that.
Thank you. The second question, starting with Ms. Williams, is, "Should early childhood education be required? Why or why not?"
I don't feel that it should be required for any child to attend, but what I do think we need to have is a good quality early childhood education program that's available for all children if their parents choose for them to attend. And my point here is that it is a parent's decision to choose whether or not their child would benefit from early childhood education.
Thank you. Mr. Zargis.
I do believe in early childhood education. Students should, I believe students should come into school ready to learn, and encouraging early childhood education is the best way to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Favela Jr.
So, I believe early childhood education is valuable to present to parents, give that option to them, but it also has to be available to all individuals. You can't just limit it to income or status. As it is right now, there's a lot of benefits to early intervention and having that early childhood as a requirement. There's good and there's bad. We're kind of taking away the parent's choice in regard to making it a requirement, but I think it should always be available or expand the program as it is now to everybody that wants to make use of that program.
Okay, thank you. Again, the question, "Should early childhood education be required? Why or why not?" Ms. Cooper.
I don't believe it should be required. I think that if parents need to have the first say about that, I think that it is wonderful to have it available. We desperately need children to be ready for school when they go to kindergarten, so having it available and available to anyone who needs it, and if they want it, they obviously see a need for it, but it should be available, it shouldn't be required, and we should always have our eye on being ready for school, for kindergarten.
Mr. Frank.
Early childhood education is a game changer in New Mexico, and when I did the League questionnaire, you know, I wrote that I thought it shouldn't be required, but, you know, while going around and talking to people, knocking on doors, I changed my mind, and I think in New Mexico specifically, we need to have it required. I think if it's not required, we will have people who really need to have their children take part in it, not choose to do it, and that would be counterproductive. So, I've changed my mind, and I would agree that it should be required.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
I also agree it should be required. I've seen the benefits from children going into early childhood programs. I believe my son was one of those children that benefited from a licensed pre-kinder school and certified. He's very successful now, and I believe that was one of the results of him going into that program, and I think we can benefit from other students going into those programs.
Thank you. Ms. Pacheco.
I also agree that it should be required. I think in our area, it's very important for our kids to get a head start and get ahead of the game before they get into, I can't believe I'm gonna say this, before they get into kindergarten, my goodness. So, they are failing to meet benchmarks later on in their schooling, and I think if we get them to school a little bit earlier, that might help them to be more successful in achieving benchmarks in elementary, middle school, and then on to high school.
Thank you. Ms. Tenorio.
Well, I actually support early childhood education. I don't think that logistically we're there to require it right now, maybe in time, but we need to build up the foundation. We have a shortage of early childhood educators, so we need to have more quality licensed early childhood educators in addition to looking at the number of facilities we have in Los Cruces or, you know, Southern New Mexico. Do they meet the needs that are required by a quality care or, you know, education program? I have three daughters who attended preschool, and they really benefited from that, and I know that all of our kids would benefit from it.
Thank you. Anthony?
All right, we are moving on to the next question, and we'll start with Mr. Zargis. "What can school board members do to address the problem of instability in the administrative leadership of the Los Cruces Public Schools?"
The school board member's primary function is to handle policy and let the day-to-day operation go to the superintendent. In going through some of the policy manuals, I noticed that the superintendent evaluation policy is about 12 years old. I think it was 2007 that it was done. That sounds like it'd be, one thing I would like to see, very much would like to see if I were elected to this board, reviewed. In my experience on previous school boards, that's always been the prime directive, is policy and keeping your policies updated, and that doesn't seem to be happening, from what I've seen on the policy reviews I did.
Mr. Favela Jr.
So, I agree with Mr. Zargis that some of the policy hasn't been updated. I believe that as a board member, you're clearly, you have, it's clearly outlined what your responsibilities are as a board member. It might be that some board members may be overstepping, and that might be causing instability, but I think everybody needs to reevaluate and look at their job duties, whether it be administrators or the board. I think everybody needs to know their place and not be overstepping their responsibilities.
We're now moving on to Ms. Cooper.
I think that communication is the key, as it is with any organization that is trying to be effective. The school board has a role. The school board is to represent people in the community, all of us, and there is a relationship, so there's a relationship between people and the people in the community and the school board members. Then there's the relationship between the school board and the superintendent. They hire the superintendent. And then the superintendent has a whole staff of people to help him use the resources, apply the resources to the jobs that need to be done. Effective communication, it should be an ongoing thing. It should be changeable because you've got people who are adding to the thoughts.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Frank.
So, virtually, there's been no instability below the office of superintendent in the Los Cruces Public Schools. Now, last night, I learned that the average tenure of a superintendent in New Mexico is less than three years. So, based on that, you know, with our last superintendent, we're actually above-average instability. Now, I don't think that's a good thing. I think we all gain, you know, if we hire really high-quality superintendents and they hang around long enough to implement their ideas, but I really just can't agree that instability is a problem in the Los Cruces Public Schools.
We're moving on to Ms. Martinez.
Okay, as a Los Cruces Public School employee, in the last five years, we've had two superintendents and three interim superintendents. I agree there has been major instability in that area. We need to, as school board member, we need to hire the best superintendent with a vision and leadership skills that can turn around what's going on within the district. We need to have a superintendent that's gonna listen to the community, that's gonna listen to the employees and treat them fairly and compensate them accordingly. We also need to listen to the business community and make sure that we're spending taxpayer dollars appropriately and with public input.
Okay. Ms. Pacheco.
Will you read the question again?
Absolutely. "What can school board members do to address the problem of instability in administrative leadership of Los Cruces Public Schools?"
So, I think the key is that we, right now, our board has the opportunity to select a new superintendent. That is the leadership. I feel that it is very important that we do our due diligence in selecting the best person for the job, somebody that has a shared vision of what the success of, you know, to give the teachers resources that they need, to put funds back into the schools and into the classrooms and into our educators. I think that the superintendent is key to setting the overall atmosphere for the district and treating our teachers professionally and providing that good work ethic and good morale and atmosphere for them to work in. I think it's been severely lacking in these last few years. Our past superintendent did not promote that kind of morale in our community, and that's where we start.
Thank you. Ms. Tenorio.
So, I believe that we need to hire a superintendent who's gonna be invested in our community, who understands learning, being a teacher, supporting our educators and our employees in Los Cruces Public Schools. I think we need to have a relationship as the board with the superintendent that is both supportive and willing to ask those questions and take lessons learned from past administrations on how we can do better to manage the superintendent in a way that, like I said, ask the hard questions and also doesn't overlook some of the things that we may have done in the past. We also, we need to look at stability of leadership beyond just a superintendent, where we don't have so much turnaround with our principals, because that's some of the stuff I've heard in visiting our schools, that having stability with our principals allows them to achieve goals at that level.
Okay. Ms. Williams.
Well, we have the opportunity to select a superintendent now. We need to hire and get the best that we can possibly get. That is a start. A long tenure would be ideal, somebody that has the stick-to-it-ness to stay with it, develop a vision by listening to the community, getting their input, have a vision for where we want to go with these schools, and to implement some reform and follow it through.
Okay, thank you.
Our next question, starting with Mr. Favela Jr. "How will you address the issue of students dropping out of school?"
So, I believe that there is a problem of why they're dropping out. They're not given the resources at the beginning. I believe that it's tied to early childhood education and having a stable foundation in their education for kinder first and second, third reading, writing, math. I believe that that's how it's actually tied into that as a whole. You can't just look at dropouts as they are right now. You kind of have to look at what's the cause, and I believe the root cause is there's not an education or they don't have the proper foundation for the education, and some of them give up. I believe that you kind of have to start at the very bottom, and then you'll start seeing it progress, and you'll have higher graduation rates that way.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper. Dropping out, students dropping out of school.
The back, the, I'm looking for a word, foundation for students, I think, is truly the root of the problem. We have children who come to school not ready for school, and if they are not ready, they've got to be made ready, you know, and we're spending time doing that, we're working on that. But children need to do one thing at a time and build blocks of education, and that isn't happening. They might be pushed ahead, or they give up. You know, intellectually, they, children give up, and that's why they're not graduating. But they're frustrated from the beginning, and I think we have got to, I think there are some very deep-rooted problems with getting children ready for school, and we've gotta tackle it.
Thank you. Mr. Frank.
So, we have the highest graduation rate in the state of districts that have more than one high school, which is 86.2%. Now, I'm not satisfied with that. I'd like it to be 100%. It was where I worked in Pennsylvania as a teacher, it was, I think, 99%. What I would like to do is, any student that drops out, I think we owe them a visit at their house to find out why they dropped out. I think a lot of those students really are not aware of all the choices that are available, and I think we could get a lot of the students that do drop out back into the school.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
I also agree. We need to look at, why is a student dropping out? Are we checking attendance, and if they're missing X number of days, are we going back to look at, why is that student not attending? Are we not challenging them enough? Are we looking at alternative careers like trades and construction careers that a student may be more interested in probably wouldn't drop out, they would go that route? Are we looking at also engaging our elementary school students to make sure that they're sticking with school and that we could catch them at an early age before they get into the middle school and high school, where the tendencies are to drop out at an older age?
Thank you. Ms. Pacheco.
Well, I think key would be, I remember when I was in high school a long time ago, it was making connections with teachers. If you make those connections with teachers, it allows you to, you feel invested in the community. Our teachers now have overcrowded classrooms, and they may not have the time necessary to make connections with every student that is in need right now. So, we need to be able to get some more money so we can get more teachers, and we can free up some of the teachers' time to build those connections. I think it's also important to make sure that the rigor in the courses is something that stimulates the student, offering courses that interest them. You know, not everybody is college-ready, is gonna go to college. They might need to prepare, not just for college, but for a career, and offering electives that pursue that interest in other areas other than medicine or engineering or something like that, but I think that's a good start.
Thank you. Ms. Tenorio.
Yes, so I think we need to do a needs assessment of why kids are dropping out. The majority of students who are dropping out tend to be our learning challenge, the ones, special ed students, English language learners, and so, as we know in the Martinez-Yazzi court case, those students were not getting their needs met. The funding was not getting into the classroom, getting into the services that they need. And so, what's important is getting the funding, getting the services to these kids. I think expanding the community-school model even to our high schools to get more of that capacity building to support our families and just to also just bolster students, offering mentorship, and I think reducing the impact of standardized testing to help these kids understand that they're worth more than a score and that they have options.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
I think that we need to keep promoting the message that school is important and help these kids to understand that. Also, have more programs that demonstrate the relevance of subject matter to your future endeavors such as work or college. Talking with a lot of kids, I've dealt with this, a few that have dropped out of school, and it has been mainly because they have been pushed into the next grade levels, and they have not really mastered the skills that they have needed to. We need to make sure our kids are proficient at the grade levels that they need to be, what those skills are that they need to master before they get moved on.
Thank you. Mr. Zargis.
I wrote down three quick words. The first one is involvement. Both the teachers, the students, and the parents have to be involved all the way through from the pre-K up. The foundation, we talked earlier about early childhood education being required. Well, by doing that, you set a foundation and a love of learning and encouraging the children to think and be sort of independent. That will eliminate the idea of dropping out. And the last is community, the community-school concept where everyone is involved with that child, and you can see problems when they, you can see problems that are occurring if they, you know, sort of tend to back off and get away and not be involved and not pay attention to those foundations that we've tried so hard to inculcate in them as we bring them along.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to our next question, and we're going to start with Ms. Cooper. Ms. Cooper, "What more can LCPS do to increase the learning and general welfare of children in low-income and unstable homes?"
I think that we are doing a lot to, I think children are, children are being addressed. We provide food, we provide clothing, people, we are generous in wanting to reach out to children, but I think the problems lies with parents and where those children come from, and that, I believe that we have got to head off the occurrence of children raising children and parents being so involved in their work or whatever it is to, you know, to support the family that they don't have that connection with their children. And I think that, I know that's a social problem, and it often gets put aside, but I think somehow the school can do more.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Frank.
Community schools is, I think, part of the answer to the problem that you posed. In Los Cruces, we already have a community school. We have the Lynn Middle School. We're about to embark into three more community schools, Booker T., Washington, MacArthur, and Doña Anna. Community schools address the needs of the students that you're talking about. Students who come to school hungry are probably gonna have a little difficulty learning. Friday morning, it's gonna be below freezing. If some student shows up to school without a coat, guess what? At the Lynn Middle School, they have coats. They'll get a coat for that kid. It won't happen more than once. So, community schools is the way I think we can address the needs of these students who are not given all the opportunities they should be given.
Ms. Martinez.
I agree, community schools is gonna be a big part to that answer, and also, another school that's gonna be up there is gonna be, Hermosa's gonna be a community school. They can help the student with food and with clothing, also bring the community together, working with the parents, having classes for the parents. Also, there's medical services for the students. Also, if we can encourage parents to enroll their children in the K-5 program, again, that's gonna be another benefit for the child to be in that program. Again, like I said, I think the main answer is a community school, and our community schools have been awarded, it's an example of what the state is using now for other districts, so I think that's a good program for the district.
Ms. Pacheco.
I think that the community school concept is a good one, and it is a work in progress. I don't think that's all that's required, though, to help these students in need. I do believe that we need to realize that it's just not the Los Cruces Public School District in charge of educating our children. It's the community, and we all need to collaborate together. There's millions, there's hundreds of agencies out there that want to work in collaboration with the public schools so we can work together to help fund the needs of some of these kids in need. in need, whether it be food, clothing, there's other opportunities, because I don't think right now the school district has the funds to make every school a community school. But if we reach out to our community partners, we perhaps can get that collaboration effort going, and get the community involved in helping all of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Tenorio?
So, from a school board perspective, the budget is a moral document, and what we can do is work on a Every Student Succeeds Act local plan, which is a federal plan, but you can have the local one, and you receive more Title I funding for your at-risk students. In addition, like I mentioned, the Martinez-Yasi case is making sure that we are, making sure those funding, the budget, is getting into our classrooms and into the student services. I spoke with principals at many of our schools in District Four, they mentioned that they need more social workers and mental health care for their students. Community schools is one way, and it's gonna be a slow, you know, approach, slower approach to get each school there, so in the meantime, we need to find ways to support schools in the ways they, they need it. And lastly, with our at-risk students, I lost my thought.
At-risk students?
Yeah, so with our at-risk students, having reduced class sizes, and again, that, those relationships with their teachers would be beneficial.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Well, I think that the school system, trying to tackle what we can do to address children in poverty is pretty ambitious. That's not really the role of a school board. I think that it is more of a role of a community, and social programs that should be available for these children. And I mean, considering whether there should be a little more social reform that occurs, and not just dropping this in the lap of the school district, although we do have to deal with it. These kids come to school, they're hungry, they're neglected, they may be homeless, and it's winding up in the school's lap to have to address the problem. But it shouldn't be solely the school's problem. Again, a little more community involvement and some social reform may go a long way to help address a lot of these issues.
Mr. Sargis?
I, I agree with the concept of community schools in addressing the, the low income and students coming not ready to learn. I think this is where, first, community schools, and involving the entire community in that concept will help. Secondly, the early childhood education being required will get the children into the system, and low income, and children who in, would probably be poor performers can be, what's the right word, identified, and teachers and support staff can work with them to try to improve it. The, the school can't change the demographics of the community and make everyone middle class. We're, we're gonna have, in Doñana County, low income and poor people like that, and whatever we can do, especially as community schools.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Mr. Favela Jr.?
So, community schools is a start. It's, it's very beneficial, there's a lot of services that a lot of the kids that normally wouldn't have access to are getting. A lot of the problems, though, that Las Cruces Public Schools can actually address is providing qualified social workers, diagnosticians, and speech-language pathologists that are full-time and not part-time. A lot of the problems are there, where those individuals can actually address those, or those kids, and have, and provide those services. And then they can also make visits to the home if need be. Right now, the responsibility is falling on the teachers, and they can't really help much more than that. But as far as, as what you can really do, it's just the community schools, the community aspect, it, it takes the community to raise those kids and help them out whenever they need assistance, whether it be coats, like Mr. Frank said.
Thank you.
The next question starts with Mr. Frank. How will you enhance civics education in the Las Cruces Public School System?
So, school board members, we really don't have a direct impact into curriculum. However, what you're talking about is incredibly important. So, you know, I've been thinking that, you know, you know, our graduation rate is eighty-six point two percent, but, but how many of those graduates are career and college ready? How many of them know what the three branches of government are, and who our senators are? And I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, and I'm not sure how I can do it as a school board member, but I would like to see maybe all of our seniors get a test to see if they have basic math skills, if they can write a coherent sentence, and read, and comprehend what, what they're reading, and have those civic, civics knowledge that we know is essential.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
I'm sorry, please repeat the question?
How will you enhance civics education in the Las Cruces Public School System?
Okay, again, I agree, yes, school board member, we don't set curriculum, but I think that we do need to set some standards in that basic education for students would be civic lessons, learning about the government, learning about different aspects that they're going to be involved with when they graduate and/or get a career. I've seen some programs and some initiatives and events that are helping students this year, like they had students come out and register to vote, they got to meet candidates. Also, O'Niate High School, which is in my district, had a mayor forum, and I believe it was here, and I thought that was really interesting, and I thought that was really good for students to learn and get involved in some of those processes, and that's one way for them to learn civics.
Thank you. Ms. Pacheco?
I, I think the best way to, to do is, is, I, I'm an avid proponent of volunteering, to have, have these kids get out in the community and start making a difference in some of the organizations that are, could be near and dear to them. I know the school promotes a lot of extracurricular activities that promote civic-minded philanthropy and stuff like that, and I think that's important. As far as curriculum, I, you know, I, I don't have a say in that, but I think it's very important that we give these kids the tools that they need to, to make everyday choices and everyday life decisions regarding, you know, how to vote, how to manage a checkbook, how to do all of those things. And hopefully, providing those courses for them, or something similar to that in high school, will help them be able to, to reach those benchmarks.
Thank you. Ms. Tenorio?
So technically, technically, we can't affect the curriculum, but I think there's ways that we can role model and be an example of how to be in, be a presence in the classrooms, be a presence in the community, invite family engagement with the board. A lot of times, they don't know how, how to advocate for their children beyond maybe giving public input. And so, as a board member, you can go on the side and speak to these families and say, here are other ways that you can advocate. I know that in Los, is one of the programs that goes into the classrooms, they utilize the project-based learning techniques that are used to educate even young children, you know, our elementary-age children, to understand how they can be involved in government processes and solve real-life problems in their community, and then present it to the local government. And, you know, invite the board, invite city councilors, county commissioners, state legislators, and our congresspeople into the classrooms, and bring the classrooms out into the community.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Again, like everyone said, there's not much as a school board member that we can do to affect curriculum. But there may be things that we can do to encourage clubs, encourage field trips, to learn about government, things that should be, or we feel that should be basic things that our children should be taught. We could perhaps advocate for that with the state, to get these things onto a curriculum that is being taught.
Thank you. Mr. Sargis?
Okay, in other states, I've seen civics education and American history, for instance, are required by the state law. Here, you know, as, as a board member, there isn't much you can do about it, because your job is to set policy, but you can try to influence policies and get those kind of educations into. Everyone here has had great ideas about getting the, you know, we're talking about community schools, community involvement, and that works for civics, it works for the arts, for instance, you know, everyone is on about STEM. We need STEAM, we need arts, we need to teach the kids critical thinking, and that goes, and making decisions, and that goes along with civics, it goes along with all the other parts of the curriculum. As a school board member, you don't have a direct influence on that, but you do influence the policies, and those policies can be used to get those kind of outcomes.
Thank you. Mr. Favelo Jr.
So the state puts down the curriculum, or the minimum standards that you need to meet. As a board member, you have to make sure that your curriculum meets that. You can always exceed them, but it seems like nobody's really talked about the curriculum itself, where you can actually exceed that requirement. It's really all about the curriculum that's adopted as a, as a school, and the consistency of it. I know growing up, when I was in high school, it was required that you took history. I don't know what happened to that, if it's still required, I'm not sure. Apparently, it seems like it's kind of, kind of gone away a little bit, but for the most part, I, I think that that needs to go back on to, to, as a requirement, and make sure that that's included in the curriculum. Whether it's from the state or from the board, you can always exceed the minimums. That's something that you have to keep in mind.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper, civics education in the Las Cruces Public School?
We have all spoken with a lot of people in our community, and it's really clear to me that, that our community, the folks in our community are very concerned about, about some of these lacks, like not teaching, the very idea of not teaching history and civics. And so that's the communication that I was talking about earlier. We, as representatives of our community, I think, have a responsibility to say to our representatives in Santa Fe, listen, we think it's important for us to, to have certain things in our curriculum, and we want to see it. And, and I think that as policymakers, everything that we do should reflect what the, the folks in our community think. You know, we should, we should be representing them, and I think that's, that's an effective thing we could do.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to begin with Ms. Martinez. Should we be collaborating more with other community entities, such as educational institutions and businesses? Explain.
Yes, I, I agree, we should, that's a good opportunity to make the connection with them. I just participated in the Build Our Future event, which collaborated with a lot of entities, and this was where we took high school students to learn careers in construction. I believe it was a great success, we had over three hundred students there, we had the businesses interacting with the students, we had students really engaging with those business people. A lot of students were asking, like, where can we go to learn some of this? Again, we're trying now in the school district to go into a career-oriented field for some of these students that are interested in that after graduating, instead of going into college. Also, some of our community members help us with the community schools. I know we talked about community schools, but some of these are funded by the city, some of them are funded by the state, some are funded by the district, and I believe that's a good way to help us.
Ms. Pacheco?
I am a proponent of collaboration. I think collaboration is key to success with everything. It just makes whatever, whatever organization you are that much bigger by collaborating with somebody else. How can that not be beneficial? It's, it's engaging, it's, it invests the community in the success of our, of our district, of the education of our kids. It's, it makes everybody part of the same goal. They have a shared vision. I, every organization that I've worked with in the past, charitable organization, PTOs, everything like that, we have always worked to collaborate with people who have different resources, who know more than us, who have done different stuff than what we've done. So we can bring all of those entities together and be a force to be reckoned with, and that is what is gonna make our district and our community invested in our children's future.
Thank you. Same question, Ms. Tenorio?
So I absolutely agree that we need strong community partnerships with agencies locally, including community, what is it called, the Community Action Agency, that do a lot with Las Cruces Public Schools. Recently, the construction businesses that had that demo for our high school students was so inspiring, you know, it just really lit them up, and, and I think the community itself and those businesses, we're excited to do that again. We have so many incredible resources with NMSU, Doñana Community College, we have, you know, a, a growing film industry, there's so much that we can tap into for our kids to know what their options are, and to like aspire towards bigger things.
Ms. Williams?
I think the exposure that our students can gain from a partnership with businesses and other community members within the city is just awesome. I've worked with a program such as this in another state for about ten years, and just saw how kids grew, how these children were able to form relationships and mentorships with people in the outside community, and opened doors for them for scholarships and for positions and jobs as they graduated high school.
Okay. Mr. Sargis?
Yeah, I, community collaboration is, I, I believe is essential to bringing together all of the other issues we've been talking about. Here in Las Cruces, we've got tremendous organizations, NMSU, the Mecia Valley Development Group, the, some of the various business groups. If you have these people involved in the schools, you're giving kids options, you're gonna eliminate some of the dropping out and things like that. The, you, you'll encourage the children to think, you'll encourage them to come out of their shells. You know, kids get into middle school and high school, and they tend to sort of pull back within themselves and try to figure out where they are, and they're not, you know, they're, they're more critical of the things around them, and you, and that needs to be channeled in a constructive manner, which is what community development, community schools can do for these children.
Okay. Mr. Favelo Jr.
So, from the time that I was in, in high school, obviously, the partnerships have grown. When I was in high school, the partnership with Doñana County, or Doñana Community College and NMSU had just started, where they were offering those classes for, for students. I did not get a chance to enroll in those, but I've seen that program expand, and it's, it's opened the, the eyes of many students to what they can do. There's other fields that they can go into. Obviously, the film industry is, is growing, engineering, sciences, there's a lot of stuff that the students have access to now, but I think it's, it's really valuable that Las Cruces Public Schools partners with other agencies, not just the public, the private sector, but also government entities, to show that there's these careers that you can pick, and what they involve.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Cooper?
There, all of the, the businesses and other agencies in, in our midst are, are valuable resources. Children, you know, if you, if you learn, you, you, if you can see how math and science are used practically, and you see the relevance of what it is you're studying, it, it is so much, it, it stays in your mind. And, you know, so we, we need to have our eyes open to these wonderful resources, and, and people who, you know, it's beneficial for both a business owner and, or, you know, when you're, you're constantly looking for the, for a valuable employee, and if you get to help teach that person, that's just a huge value to the student and, and to the future of our community. So it's, yes, we need to be watching.
Thank you very much. Mr. Frank?
I'm gonna come back to community schools, because those coats, the food, the dental clinic that we have at Lynn, the, all of that came from agencies or businesses in the community. So, you know, I, I mean, it's something, again, where community schools- So, you know, I mean, it's something, again, where community schools, it's going to make a difference. But I believe that our relationship with NMSU has really not been fully developed. I would like to see NMSU students in our schools mentoring our students. In fact, maybe some of them might even decide to become teachers, and that's a really serious problem in the state of New Mexico right now in terms of we need to start recruiting teachers and we need to retain them. The other thing I would like to see, since so many of our graduates go to NMSU, I would love to see some academic follow-up of those students so that we can find out, you know, what we can do better in our classrooms to better prepare them.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to move on to our final question provided by the League of Women Voters.
Ms. Pacheco. Why are you running for the school board?
Oh, I am running for the school board because I think we need to be putting children back into the equation, children first. I think we have not done a good job of, with our teachers, adequately compensating our teachers. I think there needs to be more funds going back into the schools and less going into district office. There's been a big lack of communication and transparency with our most recent school board and administration decisions made that are not in mind of, or not mindful of all stakeholders in the community. And I feel we really need to bring back that level of trust to our community from our school board and open up that communication with our stakeholders, our students and our teachers, to know that they're valued and appreciated.
Thank you. Ms. Tenorio.
What's that?
Same question. Why are you running?
I'm an upstander for our kids, for our teachers, for our public schools. I come from a family of educators. There's over 12 in three generations. I understand what the supports and the deference that we need to give to our professionals, our educators. I also have three kids in the school system, and I want that quality education for all of our kids. I have been an advocate and an activist in public education for over four years, attending the legislative session, public education department, community output, input meetings, and defending our science standards. So I've been involved for over four years, and I'm not going to stop.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
I decided to run because I feel that not just our city, but our entire state is in an educational crisis. We are the bottom of the bottom. I think that we need to do better. I know we can do better. I want to find out what I can do to help us do better.
Thank you. Mr. Sargeus.
Well, to be honest, I don't know why I chose to run for the school board. I've done it, I'm in my fourth term on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think that's enough headaches for any person in their lifetime. However, I also spent 10 years on a school board in New Hampshire, and a lot of the problems that I see here are the same ones that we had to confront. We had much smaller schools, much smaller districts than what's going on here, but the communication, the transparency, what I've noticed about the school, this particular school district the last couple of years, it's just, you don't know, the community does not really get what's going on. It's really not a transparent system. And I've been digging through the policies, I've been digging through some of the archives of the meetings, and I really believe that transparency and communication are what is lacking the most and something I think I can do.
Thank you. Mr. Favela Jr.
So, the reason I'm running is I believe that Los Cruces Public Schools as a whole is, their education is subpar, and it needs to be increased for future generations and the current generation. So I don't have any kids in school at this time. My daughter is actually just one. She's going to be four if I get elected, or five by the time I finish my term, if elected. But then there's also other issues that I've seen on the teacher's side. My spouse is a teacher, and so is my sister. They've tried addressing issues their way, and they've just run into so many roadblocks, and I want to make that easier for them. And it's not roadblocks teacher-wise or position-wise, it's for helping those kids. The kids aren't given the resources, and there's so many roadblocks for them to get those resources. I just want to make it easier for them to actually get them and be effective learners.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper.
At the, our whole focus really needs to be on children, and I don't believe, I listen to the kinds of things that are talked about endlessly, and it's not about children. And we have got some very, very serious difficulties with where children are coming from and the difficulties that face those families, and we haven't been addressing it, and I wanted to have an opportunity to address it. That is why I am running for the school board.
Thank you. Ms. Frank.
I am running for the school board because I think I am uniquely qualified to fill that position. I devoted my entire career to education as a classroom teacher, and school boards really are about education, and they're there to provide support for the people that are in classrooms. That would be the students, the teachers, and the educational assistants. As a school board member, I believe I have the ability to listen and listen to the community, listen to the parents, and I am incredibly proud to serve on the only school board in New Mexico that has a student advisor on the dais. The demands of a school board member are demanding. That's not a good sentence, but it takes a lot of time. When I first ran, they said, it's two meetings a month. That's a big lie. So, you know, I am running, I would like the vote of the people in District 5.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
Okay, I'm running because I believe my educational background brings diversity to the school board. I'm the Director of Construction for LCPS. I've been there 11 years, and I've been involved in education for the last 25 years. I'm running also because I believe we need more transparency, and I think it lacks it right now. Also, want to make sure that we listen to students and employees. I think we need to treat our employees better, we need to compensate them, and I need to make sure that our parents are listened to. I've gone to almost every school board meeting and work session in the last 11 years, and I'm kind of concerned when parents come that have been complaining for two, three years, and they haven't been listened to. I'm kind of concerned when we have 90 administrators that were either forced out or pushed out, and that's costing taxpayers money. So I want to make sure that we spend taxpayers' money wisely and with public input. No, I don't have any children going to school, but my money goes to that school.
Okay, thank you very much. Unfortunately, we are out of time. We want to say a special thanks to the candidates for being here, and I want to thank also Kathy Brooke, the League of Women Voters of Southern New Mexico, PFLAG, and the NAACP, and we want to thank you for viewing. Don't forget to vote. Election Day is November 5th. I'm Anthony Moreno. Good evening.